PM on June the ninth, 2020. All people not speaking, please put your mute button to work because there's a lot of background noise. I can hear everybody breathing. It sounds like the beginning of a horror movie. All right. So I'd like to turn it over to the mayor for the flag salute and vacation.
Can everybody take a few seconds thinking of people that have had this virus? We'll skip that. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
To the republic from which this stands.
One nation, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Andrew, can you do the roll call?
Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daly.
Present.
Councilman Nick Waters.
Present.
Present. Councilwoman Alinda Isaac is absent. Councilman Jason McWigan.
Here.
Councilman Robert Ruskowski.
Here.
Mayor Bob Fry.
Here.
Alex.
Present.
I'm here. There we go.
All right. Like to move on to audience participation. Do we have any correspondence from?
Joe, Joe, announce the executive session.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Forgive me. We'll roll that back. We are going to hold an executive session after this meeting this evening. Those in attendance will be all members of council. Lisa, if you want to stay, you can, but we probably won't need you for that one. Joe consented to stay for the, because we're going to need to, I guess, go over numbers for retirees that will remain unnamed. But anybody else who hasn't been mentioned can exit at the end of the meeting. Is that all right?
Yes, that's fine.
All right.
Joe, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna beg out. I have a Prospect Park Borough council, their regular council meetings tonight, so I won't be at the...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. I am moving upstairs. Forgive me. Sorry, I had to find a quieter space. All right. So Andrew, can you move on to audience participation?
Yes. So we've got one, one audience email. It's from Dave, David Knight, who lives at eight thirty Taylor Drive in Fallcroft. His message is as follows. Borough manager and council, not in favor of proposed parking permits. For too long now, Fallcroft Borough has not been effectively enforcing its ordinances, leading to the current situation of common driveways, abandoned cars, boats, overgrown vegetation, and properties in disrepair. He has a couple bullet points. If you cannot effectively enforce current ordinances that are already in place, how are you going to enforce parking? What is the timeframe driveways will be repaired if the parking permits are implemented? Will there be any type of rebate for homeowners who responsibly maintain their property slash driveway if parking permits are required? Not fair to impose parking permits for the sole purpose of repairing common driveways on residents who maintain their properties and driveways. David Knight, lifelong Fallcroft resident.
Okay, David, we certainly appreciate your input, and it is noted. I will say that, and I, you know, I, I think it's a fair, you know, a fair statement to make. The, the, the parking permits are not solely for the purpose of driveways, although it does segue and ducktail well into the need for the restoration of common driveways in a cost-sharing program with residents. The purpose are also to solve a very serious parking permit, or parking problem that we have in the village, that anybody who lives in the village would have a hard time denying. I'm also a lifelong resident of Fallcroft, and I've never, it's never been so difficult to park a vehicle as it is today. And so the, the great thing about the parking permit plan that we're, that we're still shaping is that it kills two birds with one stone. It addresses the driveway issue with a revenue stream to help pay for, or share the cost of driveway repairs with, with residents, and it helps to solve the parking problem. Is there anybody else from council who'd like to comment on the, or to respond to the residents', the residents', resident statement?
This is, there's two, there's always two complaints about code enforcement. One is that we don't do it, and we're not following the ordinance that we already have on file. And the other is that we over-enforce ordinances because we are greedy to get the money. So if, you know, and, and these could be neighbors of each other. So, I mean, you know, while I heard what the resident had to say, we could find another resident that says we fine too much. And right now, we weren't finding as much as, as we had before, I believe, and Andrew, you could probably weigh in on this, and that's because of the situation we were in. We didn't want to be nickel and diamond people during the quarantine.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I actually, it's, again, it's hard, I can't gauge what we were doing at this time last year for obvious reasons, but I will say that we, we make every effort when and where possible to try and find ways to remedy situations without having to find or lean residents. It's not something we look forward to doing. We're not in this for revenue. It's about trying to keep the neighborhood nice looking, you know, looking nice and helping people at the same time. I also just want to say that just because it may not, it may not appear that someone has adjusted their behavior, that's not to say that they haven't been fined, or given a citation, or even appeared in court. There is a process. A person, in many cases, people might pay several fines, might appear in court multiple times before, you know, there's a legal order from a judge that forces them to change behavior, or, you know, there are a lot of things that go into that. So just be, things aren't always as they seem. So if you, if you drive by a house that you've complained about several times, don't assume that because things haven't changed, that there hasn't been a code enforcer out there to make the concerted attempt to enforce the code. Is there anybody else? No? All right. Like to move on to public finance and administration. So I guess I've already done that. We've already discussed the parking permit issued at length, thanks to the residents' comments. But I would like to solicit for more input from council members regarding, you know, what they think in terms of this parking permit plan. Anyone? Kyle?
Yeah, so one of the things that I think we may run into that I've, I think I've discussed individually with many people is this idea that the timeline, and I think Mr. Knight also brought up the idea of what's the timeline that these restorations would be occurring under. And so the discussion needs to come up of how we would go about doing that, whether it would be a slow process in which we just would use the funds that we collect through the parking permit program to slowly repair sections of the driveway, or if the borough would upfront the costs to do that, and then pay back that upfront from the parking permit program. And I think that from a public perception and from a, the sense that, and a point that Joe has brought up multiple times, is getting to multiple things at once, so the quality is higher. If we were to upfront that, that may, one, make people understand why we were doing it, and, two, would also increase our ability to negotiate pricing and things like that.
With the boundaries of scale. Yeah, I agree. So that, that brings me to two questions for two separate people. Joe, would, would the borough have additional borrowing power if we wanted to borrow at the front end of the project and use the revenue stream from parking permits to pay that loan back slowly? That's my question to you. My question to Lisa, is there, is there any way that we can get pricing for what it would cost for an entire borough-wide driveway restoration program with, with just a large-scale plan? I mean, I know they won't be able to pay it all at once, but one project. Is, is there a way to find out what that's going to run us?
I, I can, I need to find, I did many years ago a mapping of all of the alleyways in the village area. I don't have all of the alleyways mapped elsewhere, which I know there are some alleyways, but with that mapping, I can actually do similar to what we did with the road program, and do block by block and come up with a cost estimate.
Okay.
I don't know if that's, that kind of detail's necessary at this point. What, what Andrew had, had asked me last week was, was what's the, what is the scale of, so what is that budget number to get all of the alleys paved? But once I find that plan, and I know I have that plan, I think it's out in our storage garage, but once I find that, we'll be able to come up with some sort of an estimate.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's, it wouldn't be nearly as much as the roads, it's one lane, right? So it would be, and...
Well, we, when we do the roads, the, the spreadsheet that we use, it's the length and the width. So it's based on length and width. It's not, it's not a lane or, or a full width. It, it's a full width. I mean, that's, that's your, that's your alleyway is the full width. So we just, we'll just plug in a fifteen foot, for example, fifteen foot alleyway. I probably have what, what they're running because of some of the old, old driveway permits that I used to review that I don't review anymore. So I have some of that information.
Okay, great.
All right?
Yep, yep. And Joe, what, what's, I mean, we've saved considerable amount of money on the bids that we accepted for the new building, so that, I mean, I think that would give us some wiggle room in terms of borrowing, borrowing power, am I correct?
Yeah, if we need, if we even need to borrow, once we get the cost estimates back from Lisa, since we're getting it, the residents are going to be paying it through the permits, we may have been able to just use some of the money we have set, set aside to do some of the funding for the, the driveways, and then as the, just keep reimbursing ourselves with the permit fee money, the parking permit fee money that you have. So we might be able to self-financial it, if possible, but once we get the cost estimates, we can look at both ways, borrowing as well as, as self-financing it.
Okay. So that'd be self-financing, it, it sounds good because it saves us on interest, so that's, I like, I like to count that.
And as long as, as long as we're getting people that they're going to pay, we should be okay. It just, it'll just be getting the cost estimate and then figuring out how much we're going to be able to bill accordingly, based on cards, and however you're going to do it money-wise.
Does anybody have a problem with the violation fines going into the same kitty? Same, the same fund? So in other words, if you don't get your permit, you get a violation, or you get towed, or you get whatever, whatever the punitive course of action is for not complying, are we allowed to, actually, I should probably ask Alex that, are we allowed to dedicate those funds as well to the same specific plan?
Yes, yeah, that's perfectly acceptable.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, does anybody have anything else to add or subtract from that discussion item?
I think once we have some estimates, we may want to go about the process of setting up some public information meetings about this before we make any final plans and allow people to make comments specifically on this once things open up a little bit more.
Yep.
Because I know, obviously, conversations on Facebook didn't lead to many public comments, but I know that, you know, I've engaged with a number of residents about this personally, more people than just one have an opinion.
What's, I mean, my general gauge of the situation is, is that most people seem to be in favor of this. I mean, that, you know, that, that was my feeling on the, you know, on the campaign trail, even now as we continue to explore the, the plan. So I know that there's some people that, you know, that are against it, and, you know, I respect that. Are there any council members that have anything more to add on this item? No? Okay. All right, so we'll move on. I'm sorry.
You know, I'm in favor, this, this is a, this solves the problem, they don't have driveways, didn't want to be taxed for this, and it was a legitimate concern, and it's one I've had for a very long time, is to say, you know, if you don't have a driveway, why should you then subsidize this particular program? I think parking permits does exactly that. It dedicates the money to, to where it needs to go. The people who will be getting driveway restoration will be the ones to get the permit, so it's a common sense solution, I think.
Thank you, Councilman McWigan, I appreciate that. And we definitely appreciate your support moving forward with it, and hope, you know, you'll be a part of, of shaping the, you know, the bill, shaping the, the piece of legislation before it's passed, or the ordinance, so to speak. So I guess, seems like that's, we don't have any other comment from council members. I'd like to move on to the discussion of a proposed ordinance relating to fencing in Fallcroft Borough. And I would like to invite comments from council members.
Olympic sport.
Say again?
I hope you mean the Olympic sport.
I mean, it was, it was brought to me from, from, from Facebook, from some residents, and there are a couple council members that I think feel strongly about it in one direction, and there are a couple council members that feel strongly about it in the other, and I'm, I'm sort of open to a compromise. I mean, I, I actually, I would be honest, I would be straight up, I absolutely hate cyclone fences. I think they're ugly, they're unsightly, and I think there are other options other than cyclone that look better and, and, and keep the neighborhood looking good. That's my angle. Of course, whatever the council majority, I will not be voting for the approval of cyclone fences. My vote will be no, but I would, I would vote for a bill, and I think we could get something unanimous out of this council if there was some sort of compromise plan, because people need fencing. There could be fencing solutions that aren't so ugly, but I'm against the cyclone fences. I'll say that, but I would invite anybody else to share their thoughts.
Joe, look at my yard. I have basically an open yard except for ten foot off the path where I have the fence across with a gate. That's where the dogs are, that's where the deck is, and it looks like an open yard.
True.
Well, Joe, I would just add this. All I'll say is to anyone, drive through our neighborhood, or any neighborhood that allows front yard fences, and then drive through Darby Township, come back and tell me which one looks better.
I agree.
There's no comparison.
Okay, well, here's, here's what I said to Joe at that point when he said that to me. Briar Cliff areas, which I'm thinking is what you're talking about, already does not allow fences. They don't have fences already. So we already have fences. It's not going to change. We're not going to get that clean, no fence look unless we make everybody take down their fences, which we're not going to do. So I know that it looks better, and it's more appealing, but we're never going to get there. And I think what's happening is people are putting up weird, not real fences, garden fences. They're, they're trying their hardest to contain their pets. Over on Taylor Drive, there's all kinds of crazy, weird-looking ups and downs, all different size, not permanent fences. And I think by this, having this ordinance the way it is currently, we've created a different issue where people are trying to create fences out of things that aren't fences. And so I also will tell you that I have a neighbor whose fence got knocked down, and she was told she was not allowed to put it back up. So I also wonder how many people aren't maintaining their contracts because they believe they won't be allowed to put their fence back up if we keep the ordinance as it is now.
Okay. So, I mean, what about, I mean, what, what are your thoughts on the idea of standardizing a style of fence other than cyclone?
I, I mean, I'm completely against that, because what you like and what I like are not the same. We're not a homeowners association, and...
Exactly. I do not like cyclone fences.
I know, but what I can afford and what you can afford are not the same. And so having set standard fences that people can choose from is very homeowners.
If you put a cyclone fence outside of your house, it affects my property value.
I agree.
So your decision to put that out is lowering my cost of resale.
But, but does it really, like, where's the proof in that?
It definitely does. It does really, sure.
I, I would like to see information supporting this. I mean, I know this is something that is stated all the time, fences change property values, and the problem with any time anyone points to a situation is that you also have a confluence of location and population differences that complicate the picture such that I, I can't in any confidence say, oh, it's obviously the fencing that is the thing that's bringing down property value, when the value is tied up in lots, houses, number of beds, bathrooms, and things like that. I don't think it has a huge effect on property value, but I know if I, in certain circumstances, some people will choose not to buy a house because it doesn't have a fence, and it can negatively.
Kyle? I would like to respond. Jason, let me respond to that. So what, what are the things that you, that you think most affect property value?
The location, 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 I mean, the old adage, I mean, it's...
I would say school district.
Location.
Right. So Briar Cliff is the same school district, so it's the same location, and they're, I think their property, are their property values performing a little better than what we're seeing down in the village? Can anybody tell me what, how they compare?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I mean, I certainly think it's worth looking into. And look, I'm not opposed to the idea of somebody being able to have a fence, especially somebody that doesn't have a backyard, but I, I, I mean, and I, I'm, I might not be in majority of council tonight, you know what I mean? Like, I might not be in the majority vote, and I'm okay with that. I'm not going to end friendships, get all upset and storm out if I don't get my way, but I will not be voting to support, you know, a cyclone, the resurgence of cyclone fences in town. I mean, it, I, I would actually like to move in the other direction where when you sell your property, part of your inspection to be approved for sale from the borough would be to remove the cyclone fence in your yard. I don't know if we're allowed to do that, but, I mean, I, I'm, I'm in that direction. I wouldn't oppose to, to the concept of nicer-looking fencing. So, I mean, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I know it's, it's a divisive issue. It doesn't mean that we're divided, it just means, you know, we might disagree on that, but I think, you know, if there's anybody else that wants to express an opinion, please do.
Hey, Joe, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
I think one of the problems too is, you know, it's a curb appeal. I mean, yeah, any kind of fence could look great, but there's so many people that have gotten these cyclone fences, and they just let them go.
Correct.
They're tilted, they're bent, they're broken, they're, they're hanging open, they don't close. It's like anything else, if they were all taken care of, they could look great, but the problem is you drive around down here, and that's the first thing you see is half of a fence, a pole, it's open rust. I mean, if they're taken care of, that's one thing, but, you know, if we're going to do something with an ordinance, you know, within an ordinance for these, I think we should, we'll have to put something in there as, you know, like everything else, maintain it. You've got to maintain these things, because if you don't, it's going to look like hell.
Right.
And one of the first things you look at, no matter where you live, Briar Cliff here, Society Hill, you pull up the roof, it'll look nicer than the one next to you, you're going to look, want to look nicer, regardless of what's inside the one that doesn't look as nice. It's curving, you look at, in any neighborhood, any, no matter what the dose range is, it's curving.
Right. So let me ask this, does anybody know if the woman whose fence was knocked down, is there a provision in the ordinance for that? Like, if, if there was an accident, their fence was knocked down by a car, should they still be subject to, I mean, they should be able to replace that? Does the ordinance exclude, does it not allow that as it stands?
To, um, once, you're not allowed to replace the poles that go into the ground. So, and the reason it was written like that was so that these would eventually fade out.
Right.
There's no specific for, you know, anything saying, well, if there was an accident, but you're, you're not allowed to go back in and, and put in posts.
So a tree fell on my neighbor's fence and took out quite a few of her poles, and she has a dog and kids and no fence, and cannot put a new fence back.
And no backyard.
And no backyard. We have a driveway where she's at.
I mean, I, I would also argue that when you have front yard fences and people have neighbors, that they allow their dogs to go to the bathroom in the front yard of their house, and they don't clean it up. That's another problem.
It's a big problem, actually. It's a big problem we deal with every day. I think we get quite a few phone calls daily about that.
But people without fences let their dogs go to the bathroom in the yard and don't clean up also. I mean, the fence doesn't change whether people are cleaning up their dog poop or not.
Yeah, but they don't have a fence, they have the dog on a, on a leash, and they're, I, I, I mean, you, I don't know.
My dogs, my dogs tethered out front in the yard. There's no, there's no fence, she poops, one of the kids go out and clean it up eventually. Doesn't necessarily happen as she does it, but it does happen. There might be a day or two where it doesn't get picked up right away. The fence doesn't change my inability to go out and clean up the dog poop.
It doesn't affect your ability. It sounds like you clean up after yourself. I'm talking about people who don't.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm wondering how a fence would actually change that. I mean, if, if they're not cleaning up their dog poop, without a fence or with a fence, I don't know how a fence actually would change their cleanliness.
I, I, I mean, I see both points. I mean, I, like, you know, I mean, you're right, a fence is not going to affect a person's cleanliness, however, I mean, I mean, I, I just, my angle is not, that's not my angle. My angle is, is property value. So, and, and my angle is, if you, the things that you do affect another neighbor's property value, that's where your right ends and their right begins. So if, I mean, you have a right to do what you want to do, but your right ends where another person's right begins, so other people have a right to be free from the consequences of your decisions. That's my, that's my outlook on it. And I do believe that they, they're ugly, and I think that they hurt, curb appeal, and I do think that the, the differential in property values between Briar Cliff and Fallcroft has absolutely nothing to do with location, because Briar Cliff, there are parts of Briar Cliff that are no further from McDade Boulevard than Fallcroft. And the fact that they're in the same school district completely negates that, too. So then what is responsible for the price differential in property values between Briar Cliff and Fallcroft?
One, what is the price differential? And two, that's circular logic where if...
If a property value in one area is higher than the other...
What is it?
Why is that? Why is it? What is, what is, right, so what is the factor that, that contributes? And the one big difference I see driving through Briar Cliff as opposed to the village is the, is, is curb appeal.
Okay, but Joe, what's the average property value in Briar Cliff?
I, I don't know, but the last time I looked, they were doing a little better than us.
So, what, throwing Westbrook Park, too? You got Briar Cliff, Westbrook Park, Fallcroft, where would you rather buy a house?
Where I bought my house?
And it's the look, it's the look appeal of the neighborhood.
But additionally, your, your logic is somewhat circular, because if your rights end where someone else's rights begin, how is it the decision that you want your property value to be higher then affects the, the rights of someone else's decision? Like, it's a circular logic. The consequences of your choice to not want your property value to go lower then affects my ability to have what I want, and it, it's not a logic that stands up to...
So if your, if your actions affect me negatively financially, then that is a negative, that is a, that is a, so you could call it circular if you'd like, but if what I do affects you negatively, I mean, I, that, that, that's where my right ends and yours begins to not be, so, you're right, so you're right to have a fence. I, I mean, i- i- if, in a perfect world, I mean, I guess everybody could just do whatever they want, whenever they want, wherever they want. So, I mean, we have these rules in place for a reason, and we're trying to turn around the situation in town and, and try and improve property values. I mean, that, that's, I mean, I, I think that we should, we shouldn't even be entertaining ideas that threaten that in any possible way. But I'm, I'm open to, like I said, I will call the question at the next meeting if, if the ordinance is drawn up. I mean, we'll call the question. I will vote no if it's, if it's going to be to allow cyclone fences. I will vote yes. You could probably get a unanimous vote out of this council for a better-looking fence, but if we, if we want to, if what we want to do is steamroll and have it all our way, by all means, if you have the four votes, do it. But there will come a time when you're looking for a compromise, and it won't happen, because people remember that. That's all I'm going to say. That's all I'm going to say about that. But I will call the question, and I will respect the majority rule of council. I will, I will, I will respect that vote, whatever it is. I just won't be voting for it.
We're not, I'm not saying we need to call a vote right away. What I'm saying is, let's gather the information. We're going on just hearsay at this point. We don't know that the property values over in Briar Cliff are so much higher... We don't know that the property values over in Briar Cliff are so much higher. And we're assuming that it's because they don't have fences. That, that's an assumption. We don't actually know why. We have no data, no information. It's just an assumption. And to say that it looks so much better and the curb appeal is so much better over there doesn't change the fact that people are putting up crazy garden fences and all kinds of other silly things to try to fence in their property to keep their dogs or kids in or to keep other people's dogs or kids out.
Well, I could say that anything over four feet, no matter what they put in, anything over four foot is not permitted.
Right, but to sit here and say that you're going to call a vote next week without the information, to me is silly. Let's get the information. Let's.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that. Would you prefer we do that?
No, I mean, I don't think we should be calling a vote on something that we're just discussing. Now we know where we all stand. Let's get the information we need to make an educated decision. Just saying that we assume that this is why is, is silly to me. When we were out talking to people, one of the things that was a common denominator was people wanted to be able to fence in their property to keep people out and/or to keep people in. We, we can't just sit here and say we're not going to gather information and try to find out what we can do to help alleviate that situation. I also think that maybe we need to talk to people and find out why fences aren't being fixed. Because from what I was hearing and what I'm still hearing is people are not taking their fences down to repair them because they don't want to lose their fence at all. And that's something we need to look at, that's something we need to discuss.
Can I, can I just add?
Not ready to vote, it's a discussion.
Can I just add one comment?
Go ahead, I just.
Discussion has had. We wouldn't be able to, I don't think we'd be able to draft and post an ordinance in time to be able to vote on. It needs to be in the newspaper. Alex, maybe correct it if I'm wrong. So it would need to be in the newspaper tomorrow. So I don't even think this could be voted on next week, just so you know. But, you know. Listen. I mean, I think we're kind of getting hung up on something that's irrelevant. The point is, I will respect whatever the vote is, whenever it happens. I'm not voting for cyclone fences, ever. It's never going to happen.
So I want to, I want to comment on that too, because while this may be something that some of you are hearing just now, Joe and I 10 years ago went through this whole process, one. And two, I promise you, I'm not assuming that Briar Cliff looks better than the Village because of the fences. I'm telling you that Briar Cliff looks better because they don't have fences. That's not an assumption.
No, I agree. It's not.
And Joe, let me just jump in here for a second. There's also the fact too, that your fencing regulations and requirements are embedded in your zoning ordinance. So in order to redraft or a fencing ordinance, that means you're going to have to alter each and every section of your zoning ordinance. So you're going to have to go through and look district by district within your zoning regulations to see what are your standards for fencing? What are the design standards that are currently allowed or disallowed? And you're going to have to amend section by section. So what you're proposing is a simple thing in form, but a pretty massive project in scope. Because it's all tied into zoning. Looking through your code, you don't have just a separate fencing design standard that's uniformly applicable to every sector in the borough. It's going to differ between your industrial district, it's going to differ between residential districts. And right now, I'm looking at your zoning ordinance, section six sixty-one eleven, which is where the general regulations seem to be. The only thing that you prohibit right now is barbed wire fencing. And even then, you can technically require a special exception through your zoning hearing board to construct that type of fence. So, uh, no, I don't want to say it's premature, but it's going to take some work here over a couple of months in order to work this out.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready to explore whatever needs to be explored. So are you saying that the prohibition on fences now is not, that, that, so the fences aren't prohibited?
No, no, not at all. It differs by district too. You know, front yard, side yard, design regulations. And the only type that's prohibited is barbed wire fencing. And again, you can apply for a special exception to the zoning hearing board to be allowed to put up that type of fencing based on, you would have to show an undue burden, uh, which is a high standard, but it can be met.
So then the ordinance that was passed before we came here that prohibited the erection of new fences is null?
I'm assuming that was an add to your zoning ordinance and not a separate standalone general set of regulations. That would just go into the general code. So what, dig back and look at.
So then they are, they are currently prohibited, so new fences are currently prohibited.
From what I see, um, we'll have to dig back and see exactly what it did and what exactly it amended in your code. And that's, that's the baseline and then we'll start from there.
Okay. All right.
I do know that the zoning board does have the authority to, upon, and they, I mean, it, it, it costs the resident a thousand dollars to hold a zoning board hearing. But they did have an opportunity to go in front of the zoning board and plead their case to see if they would be allowed to put a, a front yard fence.
Right, and that's special exception, um, based on the undue burden standard. There would also theoretically, as to Lee's point, if a particular set of fence was knocked down, that, um, property owner could then apply to the zoning hearing board for a special exception to be allowed to reconstruct that fence as well.
Okay, but this person in particular was not told that information? So if that is the current ordinance, we need to be clear on that. Andrew, I would assume it would be you, that if somebody calls and says, part of my fence was knocked down by a tree, that we then need to offer that to them instead of saying, sorry, you can't put it back up?
I think, I, I agree. I agree. In the instance where that, I mean, I, I don't, I don't feel that in that residence circumstance, that they should have been barred from replacing what they had due to the accident. I don't, I don't think that that should have been, I don't, I don't feel that that was fair. But, you know, again, let's, let's, we'll explore all the avenues, we'll get more information. But, uh, you know, I think that's where we're at. I'm open, like I said, I'm open to a compromise. It doesn't involve cyclone fences. Does anybody else have anything to add to that? But let me, I want to, let me just finish that thought, just because I don't like that. Just because I don't like cyclone fences, that does not make me the final authority on it. I will, like I said, I will respect whatever the majority of council decides, I will respect it. So let's move on to, um, is there any, does anybody have anything else to add before I move on? No, okay. So we're going to discuss policies and procedures related to reopening borough offices. Uh, I'm going to turn that over to Andrew to discuss the details of that.
All right, um, so, during the minutes here, so I apologize. I, uh, wanted to talk to all of you in the same place and in a public forum and just make sure that all of you are aware, uh, again, and on the same page with what we're doing in the office currently. We are not letting crowds of residents in. The office door is to remain locked whenever possible, uh, at least shut. But residents are not allowed into the main office area. We're not allowing more than one resident into the actual lobby in front of that Plexiglas window. At a time, we've got signs posted letting residents know where they can and cannot go in the building. Essentially, they can't upstairs, they can't go into the back hallways, they can't come into the office. And I don't want, uh, we don't want more than one resident in the breezeway or, I guess, the main entrance way at a time. So if they're waiting to come in, they can come inside if it's raining, but no more than one person in there just to facilitate social distancing. I stay in my office as much as I can. We wear masks, uh, you know, people are required to wear masks when they're near each other. I'm in my office and there's nobody in, I think it's fine if I take my mask off. But if I'm going to be out in front of staff or around residents, the mask has to be on at all times. Trying to limit visitors and limit these things. So for all of you, I, I love to see you. If you want to come to Borough Hall, please do, but let me know and I'll come outside and we can talk outside. Been trying to sort of have discussions outside with people as much as possible. I know that Alicia has been, um, meeting residents when they ask for assistance from the police department outside to keep them out of the building. Uh, we've got hand sanitizer and masks, again, can be provided if residents don't have one.
All right, very good. Does anybody have any questions or anything to add to that, uh, that topic?
Not to say that Andrew's not a big fella and can't handle himself, but is there any, do you have any safety concerns doing that, Andrew? Like, is there a buddy system where someone's checking on you, uh, if you go outside?
Uh, not, no, I mean, I only really would go outside with a member of council or, you know, I don't typically go outside with residents, anything like that.
All right, so talking, well then, about Alicia.
Oh, with her, I'm sorry. No, honestly, I didn't even ask her to do it. I just saw her doing it when I was outside and, uh, I didn't know that she was doing it. But, but now, I mean, that's something I can bring up.
Cool, thank you. Anybody else? No? All right, so I'd like to, um, discuss the police crisis differential. So, uh, for anybody who isn't aware, um, at the beginning of the pandemic, um, when we declared our state of emergency, we did offer our, uh, our police department a pay differential for hazard pay. And I'd like to re-explore, um, explore, you know, re-explore that now. I think we're kind of, we've kind of moved into a new normal. And so what are people's thoughts on that? Should, you know, do we continue to hazard pay? Do we not? I mean, I, you know, I, Joe, if you're, if you can hear me, do you have any numbers in terms of what it's cost the borough, the hazard pay, the beginning of the pandemic?
Um, I'd be perfectly honest, I had it. Today, we, today, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, today we, I called in payroll and it was the, the May hazard pay. It's run about anywhere from as high as twelve hundred to as low as six twenty-five per officer. So it's a, it's maybe four or five thousand dollars additional once a month. And that's in the cost of, and then of course, our portion of the social security, which is almost seven, 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 seven and a half percent. But that's, it hasn't been a real damaging to us because it's, majority of the guys are around the six hundred, eight hundred dollar range for the month. And then the top tier guys are a little over a thousand.
Right, a little more.
And then Chris, Chris said this was the last one, Chris Heisman, so I guess that's why you're discussing it tonight.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, having moved into a new normal, and I mean, with the expectation of a second wave, I, I do think that there's a really, and I hate to say it, uh, but I think there's a strong chance we could be staring at the, down the road, the possibility of a second wave of COVID before there's a vaccine. And at which point we will have to revisit hazard pay. But does anybody have any objection to suspending that or stopping that and, you know, for the, the time being until such time as we need it again? Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, I was, I was being quiet. I was giving someone else, I always have a thought, Joe, you know that. I like, I like the way you guys did that. I think that, you know, like you said, there probably will be a second wave. If borough is closed, that should be a pretty good indicator of when we should be giving hazard pay to these guys. If it's safe enough for us, for the borough employees to come in, then maybe we can relax the hazard pay. I think that's pretty fair.
Okay. All right, so, uh, all right, we'll, we'll do that then. Let's, we'll, we'll relax the hazard pay. Joe, when, so you said this was going to be the last, does that mean up until? Yeah.
It's Billy Bear. Chief, I just want to thank you guys. I hear that, yeah, I'm listening. So I, I just want to let you know, as far as the police department, we are, um, very thankful to council for the hazard pay. Uh, you, you've had our back the whole time. We really do appreciate that and we do understand, um, about the new normal. We do get that, so, um, we just want to thank you guys. And, uh, as far as getting back to the other point with Alicia when she's, uh, giving stuff out, you know, I don't think, in my personal opinion, I don't think that she should be giving that out. Um, I think that she should be, uh, at that point, if there's nobody in there with her at that point, then we should have an officer come back and hand that stuff back out, um, rather than her going out. I, I don't think she should be, uh, set up that way. So I'll, I'll take care of that on my end.
Okay.
I just want to be clear, one, I apologize if I outed her for something. And two, she may be doing this already and this may have been a one-off. I don't know that she, this was out alone. I don't know how frequent this is. This could have been a one-time thing for all I know. So it's just, you know, I've seen it hap, I guess maybe a two-time thing. I think I've seen it happen twice, but.
Yeah, so, you know, and, and listen, and it's great that she wants to do that and that, and we appreciate that. But in the same token, as far as a safety, we have no idea when you're opening up that door, who you're opening up to. So, um, I'd rather have an officer do that than have her do that. So I'll, I'll, I'll take care of that, that's not a problem.
Okay, all right, very good. Chief, um, I want to thank you. I want to thank you and, and the entire department for everything that you guys do. Everything you guys have done, I mean, you've been front and center in terms of, um, you know, Operation Falcon, uh, the mask giveaways. Danny White, you know, organized that with, with a, you know, a merchant in town and I, and with Andrew Heyman and, and tell with him and they put that together. I think it was a great thing and, but I, you know, I just, I can't thank you enough. I, I do believe we have the, the best police department in Delaware County and I'm real proud of that. So I want to thank you. So don't thank me, thank you.
Not a problem, no. We're all working together, we're small, so. That's, that's where we're at.
All right, thank you, chief.
All right. Yep.
All right, let me get my agenda out here. Uh, I think we're moving on to public work with Kyle Willis, correct?
Yeah, um, so on here, the first point is to discuss the status of bulk trash. As we are changing things with the borough operations, we also may want to kind of take in a look at what we're doing with bulk trash currently. We have the dumpster behind Borough Hall, um, and we are not doing pickups right now. Now, Andrew can speak to in a second more about the cost and what that kind of looks like. But I think as we move forward, we may want to consider continuing to use the dumpster as, um, if the prices seem to be as they're stabilizing and not that much different than what we've been paying normally. The only consideration here is that there are some residents who are not able to transport materials that they would normally have, they would have asked when we had picked up. That we want to maybe consider something for those residents since there is no other system in place until such time as we may need whatever we're doing with trash pickup in general to be more inclusive of bulk trash pickup on a regular basis. But Andrew, if you can just, um, point to the, um, numbers a little bit so people will know what they're, we're talking about.
So I, uh, we are already paying for, um, a, to rent a dumpster, which was at Montgomery Park. Now, again, just to reiterate, we've had our, um, I had H and H bring the dumpster up behind Borough Hall and put it in my parking spot because it's used to trash and, just kidding. And, um, they, uh, we're paying long.
Thank you, Andrew. Don't forget who parked there before you did.
Oh. I'm going to retract that statement from the record. I, uh, anyway, we're paying about sixty-five dollars a ton for the trash that we're dumping. That dumpster is full a lot, so I'm sure you've all seen it packed. But actually, it's not packed neatly, so we're not talking about really heavy, uh, loads that we're dumping. It's anywhere between one to three tons, usually in the one to two range. We've had one, I think it was a little bit over three tons. It's sixty-five dollars a ton. It's costing us anywhere between, you know, sixty-five and say a hundred and ninety-five dollars, uh, for each pickup. Those pickups, I believe, have dropped off. It seems in the last couple of days to a week that we've had fewer items. So again, it depends on how many times a week that Mike from H and H has to come and pick the thing up. They're not paying extra for the pickups and we already were having the thing picked up. So I wouldn't consider every single load to be an excess expense for us. So I, if I had to bet money, we're paying an extra two to four hundred dollars a week. And again, it's hard to pin down because we already were doing some of this. So I think if I had to put money, we've, we probably are in the two thousand dollar range that we've spent extra for this, uh, service to residents.
Andrew. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Nick, go ahead.
Do we still need the dumpster back there? Can we go back to norm or never know?
Uh, well, so I think, you know, that, uh, I think it's a good program. I think it's not perfect. I don't think that we have a lot of non-residents using it. I think because of where it's posted, I just think that we had a lot of people who needed and now have time to unload bulk trash. We got a lot of people off work, we got a lot of people with time on their hands who are bored. And, you know, we have a lot of people who maybe didn't know about the service before or, I don't know. But I just think, um, I think it's helpful. I think it's not flawless. I don't think it's a long-term solution, but I think it's something that, I don't think it's something we should be doing a year from now, hopefully, or two years from now, but I think it's something we could be doing in three or four months and it would be okay. We should, they continue to explore options and I'm, I'm open to them, including going back to partial pickups or, um, doing other things. But, you know, I think right now it's working out pretty well.
So Councilwoman Daly, she brought up a fair point, um, before the meeting began when we were talking privately. And, you know, one of the issues being that there are residents who are not able to get. And, you know, one of the issues being that there are residents who are not able to get their items to the dumpster. I mean, in my situation, I mean, I have a means to get most large items to the dumpster if I need to. So I'm not going to take advantage of bulk pickups if I can get it out when I want, whenever I want. So I, I don't expect that people would abuse it if we could still make provisions that Highway could collect for people who are unable to move it themselves. Like, in other words, if I want something out of my house, I want it out now. If I know I can take it to the dumpster now, I'm doing it myself. But there's some people can't do that. So is there some sort of provision for them? And how do we, if there isn't, how do we make one?
So I guess there's two ways of looking at it. One, we could have H and H pick up. I've had them sometimes pick up items behind people's houses that were left. It's not something that happens very frequently. But if somebody leaves a table outside and they might not normally take it, H and H will, not always, but generally take it. If we were to do that on a large scale, then I don't think there's any reason to have the dumpster, because I think very quickly everyone will just put their stuff outside. And I don't think there's any way to means test whether or not a resident needs the pickup or not. The odds are they probably do. And I think people make the extra effort to find a way to get the items to the dumpster. And sometimes I think it's a big burden, and sometimes I think it's not. And so I just think that, and while I support partial pickups, I'm happy to do anything. I'm happy to go back to the old system, if that's what you think would be better for people. But I do think that it would quickly devolve into nobody bringing items to the dumpster. I can tell you right now, I drive a Toyota Corolla. It's usually filled with fishing rods and stuff like that. But, you know, I would, I would, I would definitely ask to have my, my bulk trash picked up if I were doing it, even if I could borrow a truck from a friend. So I just think it's hard to, it's going to be hard to enforce that. But again, you know, we could just go back the way it is, that would be fine.
I, I see, and I see your point. I see your point, that's, you know, I guess the directive I'm giving is that you're going to have to find a way to, to help people who are not able to get it to the dumpster. If we offer bulk trash that's scheduled, you're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to make some sort of, you're going to have to. Like, we're either going to offer bulk trash or we're not. And, I mean, this current system, I mean, we don't necessarily want a system that only benefits people who can get their trash where it needs to go on their own. In that case, then, why should we collect trash at all? They rid all your own trash.
I agree. I mean, that's why I don't think this is a long-term solution. I think this is something we get away for a while, with for a while. But I don't think this is something we should be, we should be doing in a year from now. We should be looking to a long-term solution. And again, I'm, you know, I don't actually have a particularly strong opinion about what that is. I don't think we can do this forever. Councilman Willis and I have discussed this.
Alright, so do we want to just continue as it were for now?
I think we should more aggressively explore other options. And I think for right now, allowing H and H to pick up some items for some people who just, you are, just not able to do it, I think works for right now.
Okay, does anybody? I'm sorry, Kyle, this is your, this is your area. I'm, I'm.
You're fine.
I'm overstepping, forgive me. I'll let you, let me turn that back over to you, forgive me, I apologize.
It's alright, but as you were saying, is there any, anyone have any points? I think this is kind of about where I was suggesting, any way where we find, for people who are desperately in need, but we continue until we find future things. I'm still currently in the process of tracking stuff down for, you know, us possibly bringing it in-house. There are options that are on the table still, and I would never suggest we continue to do this beyond a date where we can make a decision on a more permanent solution. So anyone else have anything?
I just, just a quick idea that, you know, the problem with Highway having to do all this too, is that where they would run out of time, is they're, they'd have to go to the dump. Instead, would it make sense for people who can't do this, that maybe once a month, we just have them put it on the curb, and then Highway goes around and picks stuff up and throws it in the dumpster that we have at the Borough? That saves time.
Yeah, I was definitely thinking along the same lines that you were, Jason, that even if we did it once a month, then the Highway guys just spend the day grabbing stuff and throwing it in the dumpster. So we've seen your citizens and stuff who cannot drive and drop off and even lift up into that dumpster. So it might be a good, a good in-between, maybe a once a month pickup.
And if, if the Highway guys were to do anything, I would, I would suggest that they do it to the dumpster. My only concern with once a month may be, I don't know what the volume would be, and whether we would exceed the volume of the dumpster in that once a month timeframe, like how much people, I, not knowing in how long that would take. But it is certainly something to kind of look at as far as having them be able to do that pickup for certain people, or just in general. Yeah.
Well, and what I was saying, Kyle, is if you did a robocall and said to people, listen kindly, if you can, if you're physically able to use the dumpster, it's accessible 30 days a month. Once a month, we're trying to help out our senior citizens, so please, you know, give that, that kind of message.
Yeah. What are people's thoughts on that? I mean, it's, it's certainly something we can look at doing and figuring out what the logistics of that would be.
Yeah, I think if we go back to that, where Highway picks it up, we should supply them with heavy rubber gloves that go up to their elbows and the N95 mask. Because the rubber gloves we wear, they'll rip as soon as they pick something up. You know, the virus is still out there.
Yeah. I agree. I think what, if we do end up having the Highways guys doing this, we should ensure their safety. I think that's a paramount importance if we're going to be doing anything like this.
Yeah, proper PPE is a must, so, yeah.
Anyone else?
And.
Yeah, one more.
Yep.
Wait, no, actually, Andrew, we were going to table this for a later date, right?
Yeah, we've, we've since decided this going out, that this could, this is something that we can just table.
I'll, I'll mention it just for, so people are all on the same page, but we're currently no longer suggesting this. When we were opening up, we were kind of looking at the schedule for inspections for use and occupancy and things like that, and looking at this and seeing that with the backlog, we may not have enough time for Neil to enforce code, like he has been as well as doing the inspections. And we had looked at possibly doing some sort of part-time hiring for code enforcement. But because we're still not doing those inspections, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, we are not looking at that until such time as we're actually having to get work through that backlog. Because Neil can still just focus on the code enforcement, is that correct?
Yeah, so, you know, initially, I was thinking we might go back to doing use and occupancy after June 5th. I spoke, Joe Pisani, you can, you can clarify. Councilman Willis was there too. I spoke to Mark about this, and we're not going to be doing that until green phase. That could be 100 years from now, for all we know, it could be a couple months. But we're just not doing that right now. And if we're not going to be doing that, then we should consider it at a later date, but I don't think we should consider it now. And I think Neil should focus, once we get back to the normal system, Neil should focus on use and occupancy, things like that. And then we should have somebody whose job Monday through Friday, you know, really is to do, you know, maybe three hours, four hours a day, is just to do code enforcement.
But we'll pick that up when it becomes an issue, when we go back to green and those inspections happen. I just wanted to let you know why that was on this portion of the agenda for today. And that is everything.
Alright, moving on to public safety, Councilmember Skowski.
Okay, I don't have anything new, but on the heels of what you said, Joe, just want to congratulate, you know, the police department, of course, the fire department, all the EMS guys out there. We do have a very exceptional, you know, department here in Falcroft. And just goes to show you how, when everybody works together, you know, what, what we succeed in doing. We have a great relationship with our residents, council, police department. It's like a big family, everybody works together, just by the conversations we've heard tonight. You know, the concern for everybody involved. So again, hats off to everybody on council and the police department, everybody else. It's a good job, I'm glad to be part of it.
Thank you, Councilman, I appreciate that. Moving on to public health and literacy, that is Councilwoman Isaac's role. So I'll just report that we don't have any new business at the moment. Moving on to municipal planning and zoning, Councilman Waters.
No new business.
Actually, we did, did we discuss the stop sign at the last meeting?
Oh, Joe, you're correct on that. I did receive something from Andrew.
Okay.
And I agree with Chief Bear and the stats that I did see, that's on there. I like the idea of getting maybe a green sign or something like that for our senior citizens to cross and also the children during the course of the school year, to cross to Falcroft Market back and forth, you know, from that section right there, because, you know, people don't stop. And I see a lot of little kids, you know, crossing and almost getting hit by cars. And I speak, you know, to a lot of the neighbors that's in here, you know, my neighborhood. You know, I ask you, you know, for something there to slow the traffic down, so the kids can cross.
Yeah.
Is there any solution to that?
Well, I, I think that, so on the other side of the new building project, when Borough Hall moves to its new location, the property that it's currently located on, as well as the property across the street from it, which is currently a parking lot, is probably going to be something we're going to be exploring for redevelopment. And at that time, I think at that time, a more comprehensive master plan of that entire area would, would be, would be good. But in the meantime, if there's any sort of short-run solution, I mean, the traffic study did not warrant the, you know, the placement of a stop sign. But, you know, maybe there's other things we can do to just, you know, make people aware that people cross there frequently, crosswalk.
Hey, Joe, you there?
Yes, chief.
Maybe, maybe a painted crosswalk that goes across.
I agree with that, yeah.
I mean, that, that's something.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
That's perfect, that's perfect.
Lisa, this, I'm sorry, to the Borough engineer, does that require any sort of ordinance or anything? Or can, what does that entail? Do we have to have any sort of study for that?
Lisa, Lisa's not on the call anymore.
Oh, oh, okay. Alex, the solicitor, does that require any sort of a, can we just have a regular vote, or does it need to be advertised? A crosswalk?
For a crosswalk? I would just say it would be a regular vote.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, works for me. So moving on to public parks and recreation, Councilwoman Daly.
Woo, actually, fun stuff to talk about. Fourth of July committee met, virtually met this week. And we discussed the Fourth of July parade and what that could or would look like this year. We decided that we don't think a parade actually would be beneficial. A lot of the groups that usually participate are not currently meeting. They're not, they're not even around to build floats or get together, and we're not really, we weren't comfortable with what, what the parade would end up being if we had to socially distance, have kids in masks, have groups not able to participate or not participating because of financial or being with each other. So what we did was we came up with a celebration, a Fourth of July celebration, COVID-19 style. And we brainstormed a few ideas. What the day will look like is at 9:00 AM at Borough Hall, we will begin a family scavenger hunt. Teams will come up and groups of families get a scavenger sheet, go out. They'd have an hour to fulfill as many pictures as they could. Come back, the top team or family will get some kind of fun little trophy that we create out of flags and, you know, popsicle sticks or whatever it comes up to. And everybody else will get some kind of little loot bag for participating. At 11:30, we'll do a drive-by barbecue at Borough Hall. It'll include an all-beef hot dog, a bottle of water, a bag of chips, a little bit of ketchup and mustard. And that would hopefully be done by council and the mayor. And along with that, we're going to do a yard decorating contest with first, second, and third places. I was going to go get three judges. I would like the mayor to be in on that, and we would find two other, maybe Kathy Kelly. And then we were going to do a patriotic photo contest. Entries will be submitted onto the Borough Facebook page. There'd be groups of zero to three, four to six, seven to 10, and a pet entry. And I'd have three judges for that. And the winners for each of those age group would win like a little basket of goodies and like five below gift cards or something. And then I know that Joey, you're aware, and Kyle, that True Love Church was interested in doing a drive-in movie at dusk. So if that's something we could figure out, that's something we would definitely add to the event of the day. So that's kind of where we are as far as the committee, if anybody has any input on what that'll look like. We just overall felt like a parade probably wouldn't look like past parades with low turnout and people not comfortable and nor meeting with each other, so.
I actually really, I loved, so this was, I'm sorry, my dog's barking in the background, forgive me. This was Julia Ford's idea about the drive-through or the drive-in movie. And I, I love it. I think it's a great idea. I think it's something I would love to see happen. I mean, just keep in mind, we might be hearing the concussion of some fireworks in the background through some of that movie from other neighboring municipalities. But, I mean, I'm good with it if everybody else is good with it. Did you, did you talk to Julia, Juliette?
No, I hadn't. I just, Kyle had said that you had talked about securing a location and trying to figure out where that would be feasible to hold.
Okay, I think probably the best place for something like that would be, would be the Del Croft Shopping Center parking lot. And it's, it's great, because it, I mean, the land, the parking lot kind of tapers down toward the stores. So we could put the screen down toward the stores, and people could park up toward the street. My question is, is there any way to dim the streetlights that night? Are they, like, is it, is it like a crazy cost to shut them off for a night? I don't even know anything about that. Kyle, do you know anything about that?
No, I don't, I wouldn't.
Hey, Joe.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The Ford Club had outdoor movies down at Montgomery Park. They used the baseball screen where they put the, you know, the scoreboard where you put the screen up. And you got the electric to run the projector from the snack bar. They, they had it every, every couple weeks.
Yeah, so that, that's, I mean, that's something we should discuss with Julie. Doesn't, people don't have to necessarily be in their cars to do this.
Well, if we were going to do something like that, where they didn't have to be in their cars, I would think Borough's backyard lot is flat, level, and kind of dark. Might be a good location.
That's, and yeah, and we could keep everything centrally located then that day, if you're doing, you know what I mean? There's no distance decay between sites, if you're, if you're going to do like a couple celebrations, you could do it all there. I get, that's, that's, sorry, my dog. Yeah, I'm cool with that. We're going to have to touch base with Julie, our Julia Ford from True Love Church. Lee, do you want to meet with, with her personally, to see if you could partner with her?
I can try. My schedule's super hectic, because I'm back to work.
Okay.
So I can try, or I can see if maybe one of my committee members can.
Okay, perfect. I'll see if we can get you network, works, that works, works for me, sounds great.
Everybody goes with the idea, though, nobody has any issues with not actually doing the parade?
Lee, I, I won't be, I'm out of time over the fourth.
You're the mayor!
Yeah, I know.
You wait, you're the mayor, you have to be the judge.
Out of time.
Alright, well, I'll find somebody else.
Alright. Mayor, we're going to miss you. I mean, we will miss you.
I'll miss you guys too.
While you're on the beach, I hear it.
Absolutely.
Right? Alright, so moving, moving on to municipal legislation.
Wait, I have one more thing, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me.
It's okay. I have been getting calls for planning a community cleanup day, or several, like once a month. So this is something I'm going to meet with committee about, and hopefully plan. I just want to make sure that I have council's backing on this. There's discussion about getting businesses to sponsor and do like best, best cleaned-up block, things like that, trying to get the kids involved. I just want to let you guys know that it is something that I'm going to go ahead and help plan, and would love anybody's input and/or participation to help get this neighborhood cleaned up. And probably going to need trash bags and things like that, I'm assuming. So once we get to that point, I'll let you know what we're going to financially need.
Okay, very good. Very good, this is all good stuff. Moving on to municipal legislation, Councilman McGuigan.
I don't have anything at this time.
And how about the new, new construction committee?
Oh, I, I, we'll have something to report at the next meeting. We're going to sit down tomorrow and go over each line. We're gonna sit down uh tomorrow and go over each line item and see if there's any ways we can save some money, uh whether it's on site work or with the building. The contractor seems to think he can save us even more money, so, you know. We'll sit down, we'll hear him out. Obviously, we don't want to lose anything that's important. But if there's ways we can save a couple hundred thousand dollars here and there, that's money we can use for other programs.
Okay. All right, that's that's great news. Um, and we look forward to that, a report for you next meeting. Um, any notes from the borough manager?
Yeah, so there are a couple of things I wanted to talk about. The mailer went out. I trust hopefully all of you received it sometime at the end of last week. There are uh extra copies in Borough Hall if anybody needs them, if any residents would like them. The uh state representative, Dave Deloso, would like to partner with us and True Love Church to do a uh, to do the rolling food drive. We believe the date that works best for them would be, we would, we would always collect these items in the Borough Hall at True Love Church and at Rep Deloso's office. But then we would give it out uh to residents the first Friday of every month. This would be something that could go on for good. I had mentioned to you in the previous meeting, and I want to talk again, the Delaware County Young Democrats are doing a creek cleanup on June twenty-eighth is the date that we've settled, I believe. We might push it to July eleventh as the rain date, or we may just push it there in general. I, Alex, if there's anything that we think legally wise we should, legality wise, we should jump in to change. Um, I don't want there to be any expenses for the borough for this. I don't know if that's ethical or not. I'd rather personally purchase bags and gloves. They're, they're having their own issues right now, and that way there's no expense to the borough. We'll be cleaning up at Falkroft uh at the, at Montgomery Park.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, do you guys have just a general waiver for events like this that you have your participants sign?
I'm not aware of one personally, but if you guys know of one.
All right, uh, I'll put together one for you. What's the date on this?
Uh, June twenty-eighth.
All right, that's fine. Yeah, it's just a standard uh waiver of liability release. It says essentially, if you get hurt on the borough property, then it's of your own accord.
Absolutely.
All right, that's all. Okay, all right. So moving on to, uh, sorry about that, to old business.
Yeah, I do have one quick thing. Um, I guess this would fall here. After our last council meeting, I was directed to schedule the blood drive. Everyone hopefully should have received an email um laying out the date for that and a link to spread out to get people to sign up. Uh, I believe there, it is July second from nine in two PM. There are fifty-one slots. I would love to be able to fill every single one of those appointments and be able to say that, you know, we hit, we maximize our ability to do this. We'll start putting together flyers and advertisements with the links that people.
You want me to go ahead and do a flyer for you?
I would appreciate that greatly.
Thank you.
And start to spread this out as widely as we can through robocalls and anything else. And I just want to give special thanks to Dan White, who did most of the legwork on this. You know, he really was interested in it and he, you know, put it together for the most part. And I just get to sit here on the call and say the details, so uh thank you to him. And uh please spread this out so we can get as much participation as we can.
All right. All right, very good. So uh, under new business, I do have something. I did speak with uh clergy members from uh two of our our community churches, one being True Love and the other one being Falkroft Union Church. And um, you know, in the wake of the uh the loss of George Floyd, there was some discussion about something that maybe we could do as a community together, a sort of unity day. Uh, maybe have some um clergy preside over the event um in a way that brings people together in the, you know, in the face of all this division. I feel like we, we need to say or do something. For me, and I think me and Councilman McWiggin have talked about it, that uh, if anything, we, we just want to listen. I think it's, it's time for guys like him and I to listen and all of us to just, to really listen. And, you know, I would like to be a part of something. Um, and they're both clergy are are interested in in being a part of something like that. You know, it's not exclusive to anybody who is is not a person of faith or is a person of faith. Everyone should be welcome. I mean, I kind of thought that maybe a unity day would be a good thing. I I'm looking for thoughts and and feelings on that. Does anybody want to add to that?
I'd like to add to that. Joe, I'm a little nervous about doing it. Uh, you have some people that may show up to start something that we don't have to deal with here, like, I think that's gonna cause a problem that we don't really have now at all. There's gotta be another way of doing it, you know, to, as we discussed uh with Owen at True Love, uh you, you Kyle and I, um, we're waking up a sleeping giant. We have a lot of people together, you know, and we have all good intentions, you know, in doing it. But some people are gonna say different things, and it's gonna get other people riled up. It's gonna start something that we don't need here. I don't want to do it. I don't want to, I really don't. I think it's gonna cause a problem in the end, and.
Okay, all right.
I really do. I think, I think something's gonna spark out of that, and nothing's happening. Like, we're pretty, we're excellent here. Yeah, like, we're great here, and I don't want to go like Darby. I don't, I don't want to be in the way near like that. Like, the hair is quiet, you know. I believe you saw us doing an excellent job. Everyone is, you know, um. All the cases, wanting to be able to start something, then, you know, you're gonna have a lot of tag. I don't, I don't like it.
All right, I respect it.
Nick, I'm listening.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, I'm listening. I hear you, man.
Okay. I I just, I just feel, I think, because you're gonna, you're gonna spark something that we don't even want to, I don't want to do it. I'm sure, too bad, there's, nobody wants to deal with that. Like, I mean, there's gotta be another way we could celebrate or, you know, not even celebrate because I, I, I don't, I wouldn't celebrate personally. Georgia's death anyway, because
Nick.
My personal opinion, I'm not gonna say.
Nick, I, I'm, I'm hearing you, and I'm hearing Joey and Jason also, and I agree to some extent. But what if we did some kind of mural or some kind of like, I've seen um people like writing their hopes on the like locks and hoping them onto a fence. So if we had some kind of art that people could add to or, I don't know, something, something along those lines where it wouldn't necessarily be people meeting, but something where we could put.
Well, I wouldn't get a mural to a guy anyway. That guy does not deserve a mural.
Not a mural, but like an active piece of art is kind of what I was thinking, something.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, like, my personal opinion of them is not that good at all, at all. And I don't want to do, I don't want to do it.
Okay, all right. I mean, I don't want to. I don't want to.
I mean, that's just, that's my opinion. You know, I, I, I think that's gonna be a problem in the long run. And we don't have it, we shouldn't bring it.
Hey, Joe. I'm, I'm listening. I think I heard somebody call my name.
Yeah, it's, it's rogue. I think Nick has a really good point. I mean, both points obviously are well, but I think Nick has a very good point in talking about, you know, like a sleeping giant, go wake the sleeping giant. Why address something right here, right now, that doesn't need to be? In a few short months, it's going to be Halloween. Before you know it, summer's over. And with all the work that we already do as a borough with our Christmas drive, you know, for the, for the needy uh Halloween, we have that new celebration of a Borough Hall, you know, giving deals out, whether it's a Christmas or Thanksgiving. That could be the opportunity right there, just to continue to show how we always shine. Like Nick said, we have, we have a good community relationship with the borough, with the police department. Uh, I don't think we need to, like you said, we could be.
I, I respect that. Lee, I also.
Joe, you here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
I don't want to cut you off. I just want to give, give a comment from the police department's perspective. If, whenever you're done.
No, no, I'm, I'm listening, chief.
Okay, so um, I hear Nick, and I, I understand that totally. I can tell you um during this whole um time period, we had uh officers up to Wawa, um, the shopping district, and also Seven-Eleven for a couple of days, just in case anything kicked off or anything was gonna be an issue. I can tell you, we didn't have one issue um in town ourselves. We did have to back up other towns. But we, at, at, I was personally at the Wawa for about two hours one night. And I can tell you that our officers, and they did it on their own, Officer Mackey was one of them, and Corporal White was one of them. They were set up there on, on separate days, and um nothing but positive um, positive information reporting back to us from all the community, black, white, thank you for being here, thank you for doing what you do. It got to the point where even Officer Mackey took it upon himself and had um masks in the back of his car that we had extra, and he was handing them out to people that were going into the Wawa that didn't have them. And it, it was, it was, it was very, very positive um at that point. So we real, I mean, I think that you're about doing something. I understand that thoroughly. But I think you do that for a community gain like Chief Raskowski said. Also, when we do the, the Christmas one, we do Thanksgiving, we do meals. You guys are doing all these giveaways. I mean, that's like the shows that we, we shine through and through. Not that we don't understand about what's going on, but we don't have the issues of what we're talking about in the mainstream uh across the country right now.
Well, a, and chief, I hear you. I, and I just want to step in for, to, you know, the reason Joey brought this up is um, you know, there was, there, there were some residents and some leaders in Falkroft who um said they would love to have the platform. So I think that, you know, that, that's what Joe is discussing because there was interest there. But again, I, I'm, I am hearing what you're saying, Nick, so I, I did hear. But I just want to put in perspective, you know, Joe was, was kind of asked to get a platform. I was asked to give a platform to someone. So um, I think that's all we were trying to do.
Oh, we're waiting.
I mean, the, the, here's the other thing. They, they have, I mean, people have a right to, if they want to have a, they want to have a demonstration, that is their right. I mean, I, I, we, we can't stop them, but uh, I mean, it's, it's not something I should feel like, that I'm gonna make them feel like a pariah if they want to do.
Yeah, there's, just so you guys know as well, I got information today. I don't know how, if it's growing any kind of legs or anything like that, but there is supposedly um supposed to be a walk, a peaceful protest from Glen Olden Park to possibly go to neighboring police departments. Us being one of them was mentioned, and Sharon Hill is also, also. But I don't know, that was just brought up today. But we don't know uh how many, it, it's a far walk from, you know, that they're gonna walk from um Glen Olden Police, not from the police department, but from the Glen Olden Park, the Falkroft Police Department. That's a, that's a heck of a walk. So I don't know how, how, uh, how the organizers doing it or whatever, but I may have more information tomorrow, and, and when I'm informed, I will let you guys know.
Okay, all right, very good, chief. I appreciate that. I will certainly reach out to uh both uh religious organizations that uh, that I was in contact with. And, you know, I'll, I'll tell them where we're at on that and uh see if, you know, anything else we can do. Sorry, I'm just trying to move to another room because it got loud in the one I was in. So that, that's all I have. I think we're, we're done with uh, with new business and old business. Um, is there anything else?
One quick more new business. It was like a last minute thing. Runs um a food program over at uh St. Stevens in Norwood. They were just given a thousand peanut butter and jelly sandwiches that they have, will be delivered tomorrow. They cannot handle that volume. They asked me if I would take five hundred of them for distribution through the borough. Is that something that we're interested in doing? And if we think can feasibly give out five hundred peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, probably tomorrow.
Lee, these cannot be frozen, can they?
Uh, I mean, they can, but I don't know how good they would taste.
All right, I, I don't know if they're like prepackaged or something and can be frozen. Uh, I will say.
They're not on crustables. It's a, it's literally peanut butter and jelly sandwiches that this um organization does usually, and the company that they use, whoever distributes them for them, holds it up. And so they need to get rid of these peanut butter and jelly sandwiches ASAP.
Okay. I mean, I'd be happy to volunteer in the early afternoon, and I think, Andrew, do we have a meeting after about one thirty?
Uh, yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow at one thirty, but if you wanted to do something at, say, two thirty, I think that if I speak to Officer or Detective White, we could put out a robocall. We could probably get something out. Lee, I don't know how fast you can make a graphic. We could put that on social media tonight. And Joe, if you and I like, you want to staff that with me, Kyle, anybody else wants to come and participate, we could do a giveaway to kids or something like that. We could also probably give it to a homeless shelter or something like that.
I mean, at this point, anybody who wants them, we could give them to. But if there, we'll have about five hundred sandwiches.
I'll start working as soon as this is over and see if I can think of something now. All right?
If there's, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, it's hard. The distribution's tough and getting the worry out so quick.
Which is why, why we ended up with them, because that's the problem they're having.
Yeah, that's, that's a fair point. Andrew, see what we could do. I mean, I hate, there's the thought of food going to waste at a time like this, it just makes me sick. So, if there's anything we can do, let me know.
I agree. If we're gonna do a giveaway, we might want to make that decision tonight just so that I can act, because the first thing in the morning, I can put together a robocall, maybe as quickly as tonight, and get it out tomorrow. Uh, and then we could make a graphic tonight. We could do that if you wanted to do that.
Okay, all right, very good.
Are we doing that?
Yeah, I mean, council, what do you?
I can put together a flyer. You just have to show me what you want to do.
All right, I'll send you the wording of it as soon as this is over.
Okay.
All right.
I, I have to work, so I will not be able to be there tomorrow. I will have Morgan, my daughter, pick the peanut butter and jelly sandwiches up and drop them off to you.
Okay, okay. All right, is there, do we have any volunteers for tomorrow?
I'll hope. What time? What time was that, Lee? One thirty?
I think I'm getting. I'm getting the sandwiches at like ten AM, so whatever time you guys want to do it. I work until noon and then again at three.
I think we said two thirty. I mean, it's summer, kids are sleeping in anyway. Their lunch is two thirty anyway at this time of year. I mean, I, you know, I didn't, when I was a kid, I didn't think I woke up till eleven in the summertime.
That's a lie. You had swim team practice at eight AM.
That's true. This is true. This is true. Fair enough. All right, Andrew, what do you say? Two thirty?
Let's do it.
All right, cool. Cool, and we could drive whatever's left over to a homeless shelter when we're done, if there's anything that we don't get rid of. So, all right. All right, I'll volunteer. Nick, does that, was that, does that mean you're gonna be there?
Two thirty.
All right.
Two thirty.
All right. Very good. So I think that uh, that, that concludes new business. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Joe, just before you adjourn, I do have one other comment. I want to put on the record. Twenty twenty so far has sucked. And uh, I think of you guys, um, uh, all council, the administrators, the police, you guys have been getting curveball after curveball. And uh, I just want to say, and I hope it doesn't sound pompous, but I think you guys are doing a great job. Good work. It, it, I, no, this is unprecedented. And uh, uh, kind of watching what you guys are doing and the ability to put food into people's hands and uh that needed it, and the different programs you guys have done, and giving out masks, and a lot of good things happening. And uh, I think you guys are doing a good job.
Councilman McWiggin, I, I really appreciate that. I, I thank you for your help along the way. You know, you're, you're a part of that good job. It's not just us. So it's, you know what I mean? There's, everybody's, you know, had a hand in it, and I, I'm thankful for everyone's help. I mean, we really pulled together. And um, you know, if people like us can do it down here, I don't, I don't know why anybody couldn't think that people in Washington can too. So, you know, things work best when people work together, and I thank you.
Alex, I agree with Jason a hundred percent.
Thank you. Um, so do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. There will be an executive session following this meeting. It will not be recorded.